Oh, we call this meeting to order. And first, we're gonna have a city council briefing. And the first one will be on the public defender pay parity. And we're gonna welcome Cal Bain.
Good afternoon. My name is Cal Bain. I'm the head of the Public Defender's Office here in Virginia Beach. And I thank you for allowing us to bring this issue to your attention. I won't belabor the importance of the role I believe we play in the city. We represent the majority of the criminal defendants in the city. And anyone who is charged with crime in Virginia Beach who cannot afford an attorney, we take them on. As you know, you do provide a supplement to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. And that frankly has been going on for quite some time. I've been with the office for just a few weeks shy of 30 years now. And in my early years, we always knew it to be roughly $10,000 salary difference based on that supplement. That has grown over the years. Now, our starting salary is in the low 50s. The Commonwealth Attorney's starting salary is in the low $70,000. So about a 36% to 40% difference. And it actually, that disparity grows as you go up the chain. So that, whereas my chief deputy makes roughly mid-80s, their chief deputy makes $153,000, I think. So the disparity is more like 80%. Obviously, this salary disparity makes it difficult for us to retain employees. And I remember my father being shocked that when I graduated from law school, that I still needed more training to be a lawyer. But that's the truth. I mean, when someone comes into our office having graduated from law school, they have no experience obviously in defending a criminal case. It takes us, you know, quite some time to train someone. And this sad salary disparity puts a lot of pressure on people to, once they get a little experience, seek, you know, a higher-paying position. Some of whom, you know, head right across the street to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office because of that incredible salary difference. I mean, that starting salary is about what my senior assistants, which are my deputies, make. So they can go right across the street and be making as much as what my most experienced attorney, someone who has been with me for many years, demonstrated great trial skills and also leadership skills, what their salary is. We can go ahead and skip to the next one, which is the end. We estimate, and I'm gonna let some other people speak here for you, but we estimate that roughly 35% supplement from the city for our current salaries would raise our starting people and our mid-level people close to parity. It would, obviously, because of those 80% that I talked about earlier on the upper levels, it wouldn't do that. But it would be a really good start. We all care about fairness in the system. And, you know, it's a cliche, but the belief is that, you know, a fair combat, two well-equipped opponents fighting it out. And the belief is when we're in a trial, two skilled people fighting it out, bringing out the evidence, challenging the evidence of the others, the end result is hopefully more likely to be true. And something good will come from that. Thank you. So I, again, appreciate the opportunity to speak for you, to you today. And I'd ask that you seriously consider this. Thank you.
Any questions? Rosemary, and then John.
Mr. Mayor, would it be more appropriate to hear the entire presentation and then ask questions?
Entire?
No, we, there are a few more.
Oh, there are a few more? Okay. Thank you, Mr.
No, I thought this was it. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I almost, I mean, I've certainly talked to them about what they intend to say, but I couldn't answer that. I mean, Colin Staley, our Commonwealth attorney, is gonna give his perspective and the importance of this very same thing.
All right. If they're gonna speak to the mayors, I'm interested. But if they were just gonna make supporting comments, I wouldn't wanna ask my questions. But thank you.
Ms. Wilson, do you have a question at this point?
No, I'd rather hear everything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Tate Westendorf. I'm a private criminal defense attorney now. I was a former public defender. I worked there for 11 years from 2006 to 2000, or 2006 to 2017. I'm really here most as just sort of a demonstrative exhibit of what happens when you have a pay disparity like this. I was one of Cal's deputies when I left, meaning that I supervised and trained other attorneys. My counterparts in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office made more than 80% of the salary that I made. And as much as I respect the mission of the Public Defender's Office, and as important as I believe that work is, it's very difficult to continue down that financial path. The very typical path that you see among public defenders is when they enter, they're young, they're energetic, they're idealistic, and then within two or three years, they realize that they can't pay their mortgage, they can't pay their rent, and it's just not a sustainable career. And that really is the fundamental problem. There's a viable career path for Commonwealth attorneys, and there is not for public defenders. And the practical result that you see in the courtroom is a vast disparity in levels of experience. It's not at all uncommon that you will see prosecutors with 15, 20, 25 years of experience facing off against public defenders who are fresh out of law school or have been there for two or three years. And the irony, the sad irony, is that after the Public Defender's Office has devoted significant resources to training those young attorneys and to making them competent, this isn't the sort of job where you can come in and gain the trial experience and skills that are necessary to be a competent attorney over a span of a month or two. This takes years to get the seasoning that's required to represent somebody adequately for serious criminal charges. And so the result is, the Public Defender's Office is often retrained those people only to see those people walk across the street to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. I believe three of the last four departures from the Public Defender's Office, the public defenders became prosecutors, two of them here in the city of Virginia Beach. And I certainly can't blame them. You know, we all have, you know, mouths to feed and bills to pay. Obviously, everybody here, I think, would agree with the statement that we aspire to have equal scales of justice. That's sort of the ultimate symbol of the criminal justice system. And as things stand, I think it would be difficult to say with a straight face that we have equal scales when the Commonwealth Attorney's Office is getting over $6 million annually and the Public Defender's Office gets nothing from the city. And so for only, you know, 5% to 10% of the amount that the city is giving annually to the Commonwealth attorneys, we could create almost total pay parity. And so again, I would ask that you support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. My name is Basil Kaliff. I'm a, I work in the same law firm as Tate Westendorf. We both left the Public Defender's Office at the same time for the exact same reason. So, you know, this is an issue that means a lot to us as people who don't have some financial stake in the matter. We decided that this is something that needed to be brought to the forefront. And Mr. Berluci has done a great job of helping us out as far as giving us advice on how to raise the issue and awareness and stuff like that. You know, in the wake of the George Floyd murder, I think a lot of people have asked the question, you know, what can be done to improve the system as a whole? What can be done to even just, even if it's symbolic, what can we do to show the citizenry that, you know, this is actually an issue that people take seriously, that justice means something? And one of the most easy, you know, tangible things that you could possibly do is to have some form of parity. So if it's not gonna be absolute parity, which I know would be a massive ask at this point, some form of parity would mean a lot to public defenders. And as somebody who was in that office, I left because of the money. I love the office. Cal Bain does a great job with what he has, but, you know, there isn't anybody out here who would say more money wouldn't help. More money would certainly help. And there's a number of public defenders in the back here who have, you know, shown up because this means something to them. And the idea that somebody who's a good attorney, who could be representing a person who's charged with a crime, and that they're gonna leave because, you know, they just simply just can't pay their bills or they gotta live paycheck to paycheck, that's, I mean, it's, I don't wanna use the word pathetic, but it's horrible. And I think the citizens of Virginia Beach deserve better, the poor citizens who have to have an attorney and have to ask, you know, how am I valued in the system? Does the presumption of innocence mean something? When you look at a budget, and maybe these clients aren't all savvy enough to go and look at the numbers, I mean, nobody can deny that the city values the prosecutor's office more than the Public Defender's Office when you look at just the sheer figures. Colin Staley's speaking after me, so I'm gonna get out of the way because he's clearly somebody who's got more clout and somebody who's probably a much better speaker than I am. But I will say this, the fact that he is showing up, that this means something to him, that means a lot to myself, to all the public defenders, and somebody who represents the city of Virginia Beach on the prosecutorial side. I mean, I can't thank him enough for being somebody at the forefront of this issue. And the fact that the other side of what Mr. Westendorf called the scales of justice, that the other side is here saying, hey, let's level this out, let's make this a fair playing field, I don't think that, you know, that could be overstated. And I think this is an issue that needs to be taken very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Colin.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. It's good to see everybody. I know it may seem odd to have the Commonwealth attorney come up here and address you on funding needs for public defenders. But I think with each of you, over the years, I've had an opportunity to talk to you a little bit about what my role is. And my role is not simply to seek convictions. My role is to seek justice. And I have as much of an ethical obligation to a defendant in a case as I do to a victim in a case. And it is that ethical obligation that brings me here before you today to stand in support of a supplement for the Public Defender's Office. Now, I know that you are not required to give a supplement to the Public Defender's Office. I know that you're not required to give a supplement to my office. So then the question comes down to, why should city council be even considering supplements for either? Should the state be funding the public defenders at a higher rate? Absolutely, they should. Should the state be funding my office at a higher rate? Absolutely, they should. And it should not fall on the city to try and make sure that the attorneys involved in the process make enough money so that we can have good, competent attorneys on both sides. Is that fair to the city? Absolutely not. But as we've seen from the funding that the Commonwealth Attorney's Office receives over the years from the state, it is woefully underfunded by state funds. And this council made the decision that it was important enough to provide a supplement to my office to ensure that we had experienced, well-trained prosecutors. I know that the city is discussing budget cuts across the board with different agencies. And I also know and respect the job that you all do every year in cobbling together a budget. And I know that you are asked repeatedly everywhere you go for funding for this and funding for that. So why is it that one need is able to get into the budget? Because you, as good stewards of the public funds, are able to prioritize what needs need to be addressed. So why should a new request for funding, when you already have so many others, take a priority? I'd suggest to you that this is a very serious need that has been brought before you today. It truly is. These are your constituents that the public defenders represent. And it is, makes it easier in the court system when you have well-trained, experienced public defenders, just like you have well-trained, experienced prosecutors. I'll be perfectly honest, it would make my job easier when you have an experienced, well-trained defense attorney on the other side of a criminal case. The only way to do that is with funding. And as we've seen from the state, they're not going to fund the public defenders the way that they should be in order to make those jobs competitive in the market. So unfortunately, that would fall to council if they were to see fit to provide a supplement. I'm here today to suggest to you that that is an important enough need for your consideration for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Wilson?
Thank you. How many public defenders are there?
I'm gonna get some of the, I'm gonna get Kal up here to address that so I don't say the wrong, wrong number.
We currently have, including myself, 26 attorneys.
So is there a dollar amount that you're looking for?
We made some rough calculations, and it looked to us like 35, that 35% supplement would cost roughly $575,000. Something closer to real, true parity would be more like $850,000.
Thank you.
Mr. Moss.
I have several questions. For one, first one for Mr. Staley. Would you say the experience level and the disadvantage is so great that you refuse to prosecute cases because they have inadequate and incompetent representation?
Sir, let me make sure I understand the question. Would I refuse to prosecute a case because of that? No, sir. I would not refuse to prosecute a case. But again, I have an ethical responsibility to the defendant in the case. So if there are deficiencies in the defense, then that's something that I or my prosecutor would need to do something about, whether it's address it with the court or seek assistance for that defendant in some other way.
But isn't there a judicial precedent where if a prosecutor identifies that the defense is not adequate to represent the client, that they are to engage the judge and bring that to the judge's attention?
Absolutely. We would, we would need to bring that to the court's attention, that there is, there is an issue.
Have we done that historically in your office?
When it deals with competency, yes.
Can you share that, those statistics with us at a later date or relative to public defenders when that has happened?
Mr. Moss, I would say that that has only happened when it's come to some sort of mental incompetency, where there's been significant impairment on the defense attorney's part. And I would, I would say that off the top of my head, I don't recall that with a public defender. There have been some attorneys where we've had to intervene due to any number of different reasons. But again, off the top of my head, I would say those were private counsel.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is, we always have the people in our society who are poor enough to qualify for support, and those who are not wealthy enough to secure legal representation, but are not poor enough to get public representation in court, they're also entitled to equity. They're also entitled, and they are also in our court system where money speaks louder than anything. That's unfortunate, but it's pay-as-you-go justice, and that's not been new in this country. But they're also left out. And I don't hear anyone saying, you know, that we're gonna raise their taxes or do something to provide better representation that they themselves send secure. So I think there's a bigger equity issue here than just the issue of the other part. So I just wanted to make sure that, to date, they are suffering no greater legal risk in the system in terms of representation than people who are too poor to qualify but not wealthy enough to secure legal representation of high caliber either. And so they're equally disadvantaged. So the system isn't just the poor, it's a lot of folks who are not competitively supported in the court system. So I just wanna make sure that we haven't lost that. And your knowledge is saying that people are occurring the same level of representation risk. I do have some questions though for the director of, I guess that's his, the chief legal person for Public Defenders. First of all, I applaud you for all your years of service serving our less disadvantaged groups. But there's also truth that there's no surplus, there's a true surplus of lawyers. If you go online today between 2019 and 2029, there's about a 4% demand growth for employment, but a much greater inventory. And there'll be a significant surplus of lawyers, and there's great labor competition for lawyers to secure employment. So that's a known statistic. That's just the truth. I understand the parity issue, but I think people often have, what, Southern Law Center or wherever these groups are, that go out and do representational advocacy politics with legal firms that represent people or do voting rights cases or whatever else that they may do. But I think it's expected that these organizations will be training grounds for people who go out into the private sector. People go to Commonwealth Attorney's Office for the same reason. They go out and work there, then they go to private practice, become litigators, maybe become politicians, maybe become judges. But it's a movement. So you would expect some turnover. So what I'd like to see versus just a request, 'cause there's no, I didn't see anything that, who qualifies? You know, what income levels, what household sizes? How many cases did you do? What were the natures of the cases? What's your win-loss record? What do you attribute your loss record to talent being? Because that's one of the arguments that you're making, in effect, is that people, more people are losing that you think might should win in that advocacy, adversarial process. But we didn't get any workload statistics here. We didn't get eligibility statistics here. I think all of us want equal justice for everyone. That sounds great. That's a goal we all have. But I think if you're gonna ask for that kind of money, we gotta get some more details as to what you would expect your turnover to go down to. What would you expect to be able to hire that you can't hire today? And what, how would you define success differently in terms of the stats you keep? That would come at Colin's expense, I guess. But what we would do for people on evictions, which is against landlords, not the Commonwealth attorney? Because that's part of your effort, I would think, would be helping people dealing with evictions. That's what public defenders do as well, right?
We only handle criminal cases.
So you don't do like some places do, you don't deal with civil cases at all?
No.
So, so that's another point to point out. If we were thinking about dealing with folks in our community that are really, not only just maybe keeping them from going to jail, but to keep them from losing their home, they don't have any representation.
Well, there are legal aid societies and...
Well, see, now you're getting back to, I'm just suggesting, Mr. Mayor, I realize this isn't a budget session, but for the listening public, I think we are very concerned about people that everybody can't have a, you know, million-dollar private attorney or wealth to provide one. That's not, we're not gonna all have that. Probably no one on this dais would have that. But I think we also wanna know is, there, what is, what is the group that you're serving? And how would they be served better if you paid your people more money? And would the statistics, do you expect the statistics to change? Because if you could tell me that, I don't, these stats are what they are, the volume of workload should be roughly the same. I didn't hear anything about increasing caseload. Our population's relatively flat. But what would get better?
Yes, sir. Well, I mean, you raise increasing caseloads. I would point out that the city is also, in the last few years, because of, we now, and I think it's a good thing, our police department uses body cams, which produces an incredible amount of footage that has to be viewed. And the city was able to supply the Commonwealth Attorney's Office with, I believe, seven attorney positions, taking into account that increase in workload. Well, I would just say, unfortunately, just like they are required to view all that, we are required ethically to review it all too. Now, you can't, the legislation does not allow you to provide more positions or any other supplement for my, my office. But yes, our workload in the last few years has increased, which is why I'm sure, among the reasons, I'm seeing an increase in turnover as well.
Can you supply what your turnover rate has been over the last five years? Do you have, you keep those...
I'd say on, I believe, off the top of my head, on average, it's been about, somewhere it's been between 15 and 20% a year.
And do we know how that would benchmark against other, across the country, other places in turnover and defense offices?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't say.
I suspect it's high in many of them.
I'm sure it's, it's not good anywhere.
But my bottom line dilemma and all of this, 'cause we gotta compete this against all the other shortfalls that we have, not know where this will rate, is what do you say to that family that has a legal issue that comes to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, who's too well-off to be poor to come to your office, but equally might as well be poor, 'cause they don't have the resources to do the same level of defense that we will provide with our tax dollars? So that is a very difficult question to answer. I don't expect you to answer it here today. But I, but I would, I would like to have a follow-on conversation, because that's a question we have to answer. We really have to be able to answer that question. And, and, 'cause if we mean that, then we gotta be concerned about those people as well. I'm not saying how I would act with your request, but I, but I have, this particular thing here, a brief, didn't make the case that parity, or some percentage of parity is, will improve the representation, which is the ultimate output, output, is not just paying people more money, but getting a higher quality output or a different level of performance. And I'd like to see that case made. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Tower, and then Mr. Berluci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna first, I'm the only lawyer on council, and I wanna extend my thanks to all of the gentlemen who spoke today, all of the members of the bar, but particularly to Mr. Staley. I wanna congratulate him on his recent election to become head of the Virginia Association of Commonwealth Attorneys. That's a, that is a, as if he needed it, that is certainly a, these confirmation that he is highly regarded by his peers, as he certainly is and deserves to be. And I also want to mention his recently enacted program to curb elder abuse, which is a significant growing problem in our community. And I appreciate that very much. On a personal note, Gideon versus Wainwright was decided right about, by the Supreme Court of the United States. That's the case that said that every person who is accused of a serious crime where prison time could be involved is entitled, as a matter of constitutional right, to effective assistance of the council. It was, from a governing standpoint, it was quite a blow, because it, of course, it was an unfunded mandate from the Supreme Court. And it changed the way governmental units had to do business in terms of providing service. I didn't have that in mind at the time. I was trying to decide what to do with my life, and I thought it was a fantastic idea. I thought it was a real, a signal of a real change in the way the criminal process operated. And I was, I got interested in law and law school partly because of that. But the promise of Gideon versus Wainwright is, is yet to be achieved, as is the promise of many important court decisions or pieces of legislation. They, in many cases, they are what the authors of those decisions or the authors of the legislation had in mind, aren't readily achieved for a number of reasons. Some of them financial, some of them practical. But the promise of Gideon versus Wainwright is never going to be achieved when we have the deck so heavily stacked against the defense side of the version. It, it, it has come to the point where I think it is undeniable, when you... It, it, it has come to the point where I think it is undeniable, when you see the, see the gaps between the pay of the public defenders and the prosecutors. Of course, I'd like for the state to step up and do more of its share, as, as Commonwealth Attorney Stolli pointed out. We all would wish for that, but it isn't happening, not this year, anyway. And maybe this parity won't happen either. But I want to endorse it. And I want to add one thing to the reason why I endorse it that may not be immediately apparent. It's, it's not simply, on a case-by-case basis, how many cases did you win? How many did you lose? First of all, many, many, I don't know what the current percentage in this jurisdiction is, but cases that are plea bargained essentially represent a significant portion, very high percentage of the total cases. Those, those activities do not take place in the light of day. And I don't mean that preferatively, but they're not done in public. And there's no public hearing. You can't go and look at it and say, well, the court's doing a good job, the judge is doing okay, the prosecutor or the defense, they're all doing their jobs right. They necessarily take place in a different venue. But it's extraordinarily important to me, and should be, I think, to all of us, that those negotiations take place in circumstances where there is an equal quality or is nearly so, because they really are a check. We were lucky to have Colin Stolli, very lucky. We have the, a great Commonwealth Attorney and, and have a terrific staff, from everything I've heard. I've never practiced criminal law, at least not since I did a court-appointed job centuries ago or two. But we have, we have an excellent Commonwealth Attorney's Office. But someday we may not. And we may need to have a defense organization in the public defenders that really is a watchdog of sorts on our prosecution, on our court system, that can tell us, hey, you've got a problem here. I, we, and if these folks think that they are not the equal, if we cannot compete with people who can take these guys on and say, that's not right, that's not right, what you're suggesting isn't right, you are using the power of your office in a way that shouldn't be used, then we all are losers. So I, I'm sorry for the speech, but I can't help it. This is something that I cared about before I went on council, and I still care about it. And I, you know, I know that we can get more data, but sometimes that data is hard to get. Sometimes the process, if the prosecutors don't keep it, the, the public defenders don't have the opportunity nor the budget to, to keep data in the way that we'd like to. I'm not making excuses in advance, but I'm just kind of guessing that, that the data may not be as available, particularly when a lot of these are settled ultimately by pleas. So that's my speech. Thanks to all of you for being here. I hope council will take this serious request. I don't know what priority I would give it right now until we actually get to the budget, but it is something that we should take seriously and, and we have a, it's a real challenge to us. I hope we can meet it. Thank you.
Mr. Bellucci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Bain, Mr. Stolli, and my friends, Mr. Westendorf and, and Coliff for being here this afternoon. Particularly want to thank those gentlemen who were former public defenders for bringing this, this issue to my attention. You know, we're living in an environment where we're evaluating our systems and we're evaluating justice in our country. And it's a very serious conversation, and it's one that's happening here in Virginia Beach and all over the country. And we should be searching for ways to create justice for all people, to more fully and completely deliver on that American promise. And one of the promises conveyed to us as Americans, greatest promises, is of the presumption of innocence and the right to a defense. And so I want to thank those gentlemen for bringing all of this to our attention. And I particularly want to take a moment to thank those public defenders who are with us today, not only for being here, but for your service to our community and for residents of our community, whether you work in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office or the Public Defender's Office, or in, anywhere in the legal system, it's public service. And it's something to be proud of, it's virtuous, and I am, I'm really grateful for your service and sacrifice. I appreciate many of the questions that were asked here today, and I certainly have the highest regard and respect for my colleague, Councilmember Moss, who often brings scrutiny to issues and, and important questions to the surface. But in this case, I think his line of questioning with respect, Mr. Moss, misses the point, because this isn't really a question of privilege, it's a constitutional promise, it's a question of right. And, and with regard to the Commonwealth's defenders, excuse me, the public defenders, they're really helping to provide and protect one of our constitutional rights. And one, one of the important things that differentiates a civil matter from a criminal matter is that we're talking about people's freedoms. And so I think that, that is one of our highest responsibilities to maintain and to respect. And frankly, the policies that have been created within this city by supplementing one of these scales of justice and not the other, have created an imbalance that we were, that was revealed to us, if you weren't already aware, today. And that's a result of our decision, of this body's decision, was to create an imbalance. And that's no disrespect to public defenders, because I think, as has been acknowledged, but I just want to emphasize, I know that these men and women are great attorneys, very, very skilled, very competent, very intelligent, very well-educated. But the result of the policies that this council has put in place, this, as, in that our city has adopted, has resulted in a situation where there is, as was pointed out, higher turnover, more inexperienced attorneys than their counterparts in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and a low morale. So how can we create better and rebalance those scales? We don't have control of, over what happens all over the Commonwealth of Virginia, but we do here in Virginia Beach. And in Virginia Beach, I think, we should be seeking for ways to, to build and deliver justice and equity and, and those virtues that we celebrate as Americans. And so I think it's our responsibility to address this issue. And I hope that as council considers our priorities for the budget, creating and addressing this disparity will be one of them. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bellucci. Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Mr. Bellucci, I think he put it very eloquently. Just want to say thank you to our, our public defenders and our Commonwealth Attorney as well. When we, we look at our city here and we talk about caseloads and turnover, you know, it's, it's hard to hear that word, caseload, because these are people's lives, you know? These, these are our people's lives who somehow, by way or another, sometimes, most of the time by fault their own, but find their way within our, our criminal justice system. And when we start talking about our criminal justice system, I think we all understand that there's a lot of work to be done within there. There's a lot of reform that needs to happen within our, our criminal justice system. So when we start talking about, you know, equity, this is, as my councilmember, Bellucci put it, you know, that, the point is about equity. It's about making sure everyone has a, you know, fair and adequate representation and equal justice in the law of the land. And so when you, you think about, again, we got body cameras for our officers, and we, we supplemented the Commonwealth Attorney Office so we can magically go through those film and, and watch and film and, and do the work there, what about the Public Defender's Office? And we're talking about making sure you can have a fair to adequate defense within our criminal justice system. That, that does create parity. And when you, you have our public defenders who put in large amount of work hours to go through, sometimes, you know, 10, 15 different caseloads, that's, that's an incredible lot. And I beg any person here to say, I want more work for less pay. You know, that's just not, that's just not sound. So again, I hope this body takes this very seriously. And I thank you all for what you do as well. Thank you.
Mr. Moss.
Just for clarification, I don't want to take any exception to the kind remarks and the passions and the, and the right perspective. But often when we have advocacy groups before us, the one advocate that's never here is the middle-class Americans, the people that are above that threshold but below the ability to get any more effective justice than people who are getting support from public defenders. And their constitutional rights are just as important as the very poor. So my point is, we might be able to better balance for one group, but I'm just telling you, there's a group there who's just as equally caught up because they can't afford good representation or can't afford the trial and the cost, who accept a plea bargain that the other minds might not want to accept, even with adequate representation. And the court system depends upon plea bargaining because they can't even handle hardly the trials that people insist on, even though that is also a constitutional right to a trial by your peers. So I, I just want to make sure we haven't lost focus that it isn't just one segment of our society who's being disadvantaged and faces those, not just the very poor who would qualify for these services, but many of our middle-class families who've had engagements, unfortunately, with the judicial system, are suffering those very same impacts, those very same lack of competitive advantage. And I don't think we can forget that as we look at this issue. You know, that's why I asked that question upfront, Mr. Mayor, was, was the situation, which means the risk of inequality that they see, that lack of competitive advantage, that lack of equal homework, which could apply to Medicare, too, if you think about it. But nonetheless, was it so severe and so improper that our Commonwealth Attorney would say, you know, until I, until my person or lady or gentleman get better representation, I can't proceed with prosecution? Well, we heard the answer is that the risk had not risen to that disparity relative judicial precedent that has followed Gideon to establish that. Because that's why I was asking them those questions. So our very poor, our on-the-borderline, and middle-class who also can't afford lawyers are all exposed to that same level of disadvantage in the courtroom. And I, so that's the point I was trying to make. Independent of the priority of this is, this isn't the only segment in our society that's suffering that disadvantage. And so I, and there's probably more of those than there are the others, when you get right down to it, but it is a bad system. So the real issue is, and I would, I would agree with Councilman Rouse here, is the judicial reform that needs to take place in Richmond has much more to do with changing the outcomes and changing the legal system from victimizing anyone who isn't getting adequate representation than just, just this pay. So we shouldn't confuse that somehow by increasing pay, we're going to see some major change in how the judicial system performs. Thank you.
Mr. Tower.
Well, I, I just would add that I think Councilman Moss is, is speaking in broad terms, and a lot of the things he's speaking about are civil representation, where I think the middle class is clearly disadvantaged in terms of the cost of legal services for any kind of conflict, got any kind of complexity to it in, in the civil litigation. But again, this, this is not the legal aid society. We could certainly support that as well. But this is strictly doing criminal defense, fulfilling the government's obligation to provide counsel to people who cannot afford it. Now, I don't want to get into a debate today about where the level's set and how many deserving people who can't, can't afford a lawyer are, are being required nonetheless to find a way to get a lawyer. And I'm sure there are some, because the system is exquisitely imperfect. But having said that, I want to remind folks, on what Councilman Bellucci said as well, what we're talking about here is providing a basic constitutional right to folks. If you can't afford it, and you're, it's a lot of difference between the kind of service you get from your government when you're accused of a criminal act that can put you in prison, and where you are bereft of the funds to litigate a civil matter, even if it's one that may be, lose your house and home. Those are, those are important issues, but that's not what our public defenders do. They, they, they are in, in a, in a limited criminal area, and most of the people that they are representing are quite poor, I suspect, and could not afford lawyers but for the Public Defender's Office.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, just like to add, we're talking about criminal defense, criminal justice, and where, you know, in the United States, I think, first of all, let me preface it by saying, poverty has no face. Poverty affects everybody. When we look at the criminal justice system, you know, it's overwhelmingly African-Americans make up, African-American males make up a lot of those who are incarcerated. I have to, from 2018, blacks males, black males make up or accounted for 30%, 34% of the total male prison population. White males, 29%. Hispanic males, 24%. To me, that's just, those are just the numbers. But what we're talking about is adequate defense, you know, adequate defense within our criminal justice system. And that is a right everybody, like Councilman Tower, Councilman Bellucci stated, everyone has a right to, within our country. And so when we have the parity here, particularly in Virginia Beach, where we supplement our Commonwealth Attorney Office over $6 million, and then we actually have nothing for our public defenders, that creates to that, that inequity and that parity. So we have to, this is something very serious that we have to look at as well, to, to kind of provide some equity within our system here. We have to do our part, at least. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else at this point? Ms. Wooten.
I would like to say thank you to Councilmembers Tower and Bellucci for bringing the presentation forward. And would also like to thank the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and Public Defender's Office as well for being here today to shine a light on the disparity within our Public Defender's Office. And it is quite an eye-opener. As was already said a few times, we have, as a city, supported zero to the Public Defender's Office and $6 million to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. That's a huge disparity, you know? And what I'm understanding is that they're asking for maybe a little less than 15% of what the Commonwealth Attorney Office receives. And so, as was also mentioned, this whole conversation has been sparked because of the injustice in the murder of George Floyd. And so in my conversations with residents, I have heard, you know, that there needs to be some reform in our criminal justice system and our Public Defender's Office. And so I think this discussion is quite pertinent. And along with that, I'd like to say, what we can also do, I certainly support this measure, but I'd also like to see us also support and also formulate a citizens' review panel, which is also needed for this reform. And I'm happy to support both of those measures. So again, thank you, Councilmembers Tower and Bellucci, for bringing this to our attention.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the gentleman who's the head of the public defenders to come back up to the podium. My question is, well, I have a couple of questions, I guess. First, what is the supply and demand here as far as attorneys available for your office?
If I understand your question, I mean, we had periods, I think of something that Councilman Moss was saying earlier. I remember in 2007, 2008, the last economic crash we had. I mean, we saw an interesting increase in applicants for our office. Could be a little choosier, if you will, among our applicants. I haven't seen that since. I mean, you know, there's an irony... I mean, you know, there's an irony that I'm constantly aware of here, in that I'm, despite the inequity, I'm damn proud of my office. We do an excellent job. I have some of the best attorneys for criminal defense in the city. Several of them that I would happily have represent me if I ever found myself in trouble. Nevertheless, it's a struggle to maintain that, and it's not fair. That's what I would say.
Is it a struggle to maintain it because there's a lack of attorneys out there? Or is it a struggle to maintain it because there's a lack of the quality of attorneys that you want?
Well, I mean, I, I'm sure, like most things in life, there's some of both involved in that. I mean, I, my boss, my former boss, who found, you know, opened, Pete Legler, who opened the Virginia Beach office and ran it for 39 years, and I learned, for better or worse, my hiring practices from him, working with him for any number of years. And I mean, we, we focus on a lot of, I mean, I'm constantly aware that I'm also trying to read, how likely is this person going to stay? You know, I referred to 2008. I undoubtedly, we undoubtedly had a lot of applicants who, if I asked them the question, why do you want to be a public defender, that if they answered it truthfully, it was because, I haven't been able to find a job, and I need a job real bad, and not that they cared, you know, overwhelmingly about our mission. It's important to me to find the people that do, for whatever reason, that this work in and of itself is important to them and satisfying to them. And keeping those people is very important to me, because as has already been suggested, I mean, it takes several years before you get to where you can really handle the cases without supervision. And there, as you might guess, among our population, our clients, I mean, there are a lot of people dealing with all sorts of issues, such as addiction, mental illness, and those complicate cases greatly as you try to find ways. Hopefully, obviously, it's, you know, something we're always looking for, without incarceration, are there all, other alternatives that will help rehabilitate this person? And those, again, are things that you only acquire with the years of addressing it. And as was alluded to by both Bassel and Tate, former employees of mine, that it broke my heart incredibly when they left. Two excellent attorneys. I was certain that they were lifers, but the financial realities are what they are.
If, if the city council were to decide to supplement your office, what can the council expect in terms of some kind of return on, for that supplement? What, what, what is it that we get by supplementing your office?
A paradise. Well, I mean, in some practical senses, just like I think Colin would quite candidly admit, because of the salaries he's able to offer, he's able to compete in terms of the type of employees he attracts. I mean, he, he doesn't, he doesn't have very many people starting out, right out of law school. He's able to pull from other Commonwealth attorney's offices, because it's actually a raise for him just to come to the city of Virginia Beach. I certainly expect I would have some of that same very enviable experiences where I'm able to pull from other public defender's offices, experienced attorneys who, even though it's not a grade-level promotion within our system, it would still be a significant raise for them. I think this is going to be particularly important as we deal with the upcoming, you know, the, July of next year, the rules have been changed on jury trials, and there's some expectation that there'll be an increase in the numbers. It's going to be very important to keep for the, the system, for want of a better word, from being overwhelmed, that there be really good, experienced people on both sides, who are able to negotiate cases for what they're worth, and try the cases that need to be tried. So I think that our city judicial system will run more efficiently. And then, you know, I participate, I volunteer my time for the, our drug court system, which is currently an unfunded program. I think the trend is going to be to do even more of those with the veterans' courts or mental health courts as well, and those are time-consuming things. There's no doubt, for instance, this might, after all this babbling that I just made you endure, this might really capture it. Like many things in life, as you become experienced, you become quicker at them. There's no doubt that the amount of time it might take someone with my years to assess a case and resolve a case is much quicker than it would be for a young or new attorney who would spend a lot of time. I mean, I can, you know, with experience, you can, what are the real issues here? What is the law on this and can be resolved? So the ability to retain people for more years with increased experience is going to allow us to, with our current staffing level, because as I said before, you, there's no legislation in the state that would allow you to provide additional positions to my office. I think Dillon's Law would prevent that, but it's only in the supplement. But it will allow us to take on these additional duties, which will serve the city well. And I'm glad, in this other sense, to have one more opportunity to speak to you, because several of you have talked about this lack of parity as the city's fault, and I suppose to some extent it was, was, but up until 2008, 2009, you wouldn't have been allowed to supplement my office to begin with. So the supplement started many years ago, so don't feel so bad about yourself.
Well, the, the reason I'm asking you the question is, I think it's important, when we have to compare all of the different requests that come to us for funding, and how much we fund them, and if we fund them, and so forth.
Yes, sir.
It's important for us to have something to substantiate a reason for us to fund these, these different requests that come to it. So I would appreciate it, and, and I'm very much interested in, in your request, because I, I see some, I see merit in it, okay? And, and, but I would like to have some kind of a standard, written standard somewhere, that we could use to compare what we've gotten in return for what we, what we might, how much we might supplement you, in other words. And I think, you know, if we're, you, you're at a certain level of competence and production and all that sort of thing, and I would like to see some comparison over time as to what we've gotten in return for if we, in fact, do supplement your office, in other words. You follow what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. Now, how, I mean, because we are talking in loose terms about justice, and it's hard to quantify justice, I suppose, and so, to some extent, I'm not hopeful that we're, I'll ever be able to give an answer that will resolve your, your questions. But going forward, having raised the issue and, and made you all aware of the issue now, I'm happy to meet with you and talk to, with you at any time, and we can see what we can discover and come up with.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and that was a great, well-needed discussion, and be assured there will be a robust discussion on this going forward.
I appreciate it.
Thank you all for your time and effort. Okay, moving forward, I believe we have Dr. Lindsay on cue to give us a COVID-19 update.
Dr. Lindsay will be participating via WebEx. Dr. Lindsay, if you could pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments, and we will be able to hear you.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me now?
Dr. Lindsay, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'd like to bring you up to date on activities since we, since I last spoke to you. There has been some time that has passed since my last update, and even greater period of time since we actually started with this COVID-19 outbreak. We are approaching approximately one year from the time that we first heard about this new virus that has caused such a global devastation around the world and, and also in our country, in our state. So I'd like to start with the first slide that just graphically gives you a depiction of cases, as we've seen them in Virginia Beach. If someone is able to pull up the slide. The first slide, please, I believe that's slide number two. And here, just as a reminder, is the course that we've seen with COVID-19 since this pandemic began. Again, I'll point out a few landmarks, the different phases that you see marked are when the governor has taken action to restrict activities, and then later to relax those restrictions. And we can follow along, looking at the level of COVID-19 activity during those periods of time. Over time, one interesting phenomenon that you'll note is that not only did we, on occasion, see a rise in activity with a lifting of restrictions, but as people began to anticipate that lifting of restrictions, it's started to precede the actual lifting of the restriction. In other words, people began to relax their behaviors prior to the event. The other issue that I wanted to point out is looking at this landmark right in the middle, which was our surge during midsummer, in which we experienced our most dramatic rise in cases. I want to point to the rise that we're experiencing now. We are in a surge, and we point out that we are approaching that level of, of peak activity that we saw in summer. And in addition to that, we are entering the winter season, holidays, and many other activities. So this actual surge in, in activity is likely to continue and not, and is not abating as quickly as we saw with the restrictions this summer. Next slide, please. And this is just a summary, showing where we are in terms of community-level transmission. And as you can see, looking at the map of Virginia, we are seeing substantial disease activity through, throughout the state, and also that disease activity is either increasing or fluctuating, and currently in our region, it is increasing. Next slide. I've taken this from the Pandemic Matt Dashboard, which is available on, on our website for you to look at, if, if you're interested. Here, I'm looking at disease burden, and this is the number daily cases, or the case incidents per 100,000, first that we're seeing as a region. And as you see, going back in time, again, in the middle, we're seeing the surge over the summer, and again, seeing that we're, again, starting to see a dramatic rise in cases currently. And we have been seeing cases increase for the last 46 days. If the, once we have seen a continuous increase for 14 consecutive days, we do establish that trend as increasing. The, the burden or the amount of cases that we're seeing are at 25.7 for our region, which exceeds our highest threshold of 14.3, that dotted line into the darker section of the graph. Then looking below that at Virginia Beach, similar type of curve, but as you can see, our disease burden is actually significantly higher than we're seeing in the rest of the region at 35.3 cases per 100,000. And we also have been seeing rising cases for the last 75 days. So we're seeing an increasing trend that actually is in excess of much of the cases in our region. Next slide, please. And here, this is looking at percent positivity, and again, starting with the region, we have exceeded the higher threshold at 10.1% with an increasing trend for the last 45 days. And for Virginia Beach, 10.5, slightly higher, and again, an increasing trend for the last 58 days. Next slide, please. These measures are only available at the regional level. I've not shown, I'm not showing all of the metrics, but I thought these were important also to present. And the first one is looking at emergency room visits, and we are again seeing elevated number of emergency room visits at 10.5, higher than the set threshold of 6.0, and increasing for 35 days at the regional level. And as well as our ICU hospitalizations are also increasing at 3.7, exceeding the set threshold, and has been increasing for 25 days. Next slide, please. So we're going to move on to talking a little bit about demographics. There are not any dramatic changes here, so I'll move through these fairly quickly, hopefully. Wanted to point out that in terms of age distribution, we're still seeing a significant proportion of cases occurring in the young adult age group between 20 and 40 years of age, with a significant peak between the ages of 20 and 29 years. Next slide. And here, I'm just looking at that distribution by age groups over time, and you can see that there's still an ongoing or continued rise in cases in the 20 to 29-year-old age group, and the next group, not quite as significant a slope, but the 30 to 39-year-old age group. And also, to the right of that, looking at hospitalizations by age, we see that the elderly population, even though this is largely a disease impacting youth in terms of proportion of cases, the elderly population is being significantly impacted with a rise in hospitalizations. That is, one would expect increases with age, the highest rate being with the 80-year-old age group, but other age group, but other elderly populations also being impacted. Next slide, please. Here, looking at demographics by race, 44% of the, of those impacted by COVID-19 are, belong to the white population. These are slightly different numbers, but still reflect the same issue. And as you can see, when we look to the right in terms of proportion of the, that group within the overall population, there is a, a significant difference there as well as the percentage represented by African-Americans being approximately 24% or, or increasing, increasing to 31% in the distribution I'm showing on the right. I would also point out that Hispanic population is, even though it's a small group, is significantly represented as well. Excellent. And I thought this may be another way of looking at it. This is a part of the modeling that is done by UVA. And they have looked at the impact of the COVID-19 on race and ethnicity. And this is kind of a cumulative way of looking at the case level hospitalization and death rates, looking at the attack rate based on race and ethnicity. And the first top curve there is African, represents African-American population. The second one, Latino population. And the third, the, the purple-white population, as well as Asian-Pacific Islander population kind of overlapping. And as you can see, what this curve is suggesting is that African-American and Latinx populations are significantly adversely impacted to a much higher degree by COVID-19 in Virginia Beach. Next slide. And we've had a number of questions from our city manager following very closely what is happening with hospitalizations. And although we are doing relatively well, I've just shown you earlier that we're seeing a rise in our emergency room visits and our ICU visits. And the concern is based on current modeling and the current behavior that is being observed, we would anticipate that all our regions will be approaching hospital bed capacity this winter. And it is very likely that without further intervention, the eastern region would exceed its bed capacity, hospital bed capacity by late January, which is not something that we want to see happen. Next slide. I'm going to move on. That's basically what I wanted to share with you. Basically, we are experiencing very high levels of disease activity. That level of disease activity is increasing. It continues to be connected with human behavior, specifically socialization, crowding, socializing, both in public settings, but also more and more we're seeing the evidence in our case investigations and contact tracing of socializing in homes and in the private sector that is impacting our cases. We're seeing more and more cases of significant numbers or entire families also being affected when we look at those case investigations. So behavior is the major driver in what we're seeing currently. And by the way, our modeling projections do not reflect the potential for flu outbreak. That would be another dramatic and detrimental impact to our case numbers should we have outbreaks in influenza. So I wanted to move on and talk a bit about what I'm sure you're hearing a lot about lately, and that is vaccinations, and give you an update on where we are and what is happening with that. Just to make sure that all our listeners are with us on a similar page in terms of why we talk about vaccinations, why is this so important? I thought that this slide was a nice summary to talk about what happens when someone is vaccinated or how does someone acquire immunity. So we start with a population and with something like a pandemic, the entire world is susceptible. No one at the beginning of a pandemic has any significant immunity to the agent, in this case, COVID-19. And normally, a, a, the natural process of acquiring immunity involves a person being exposed to the infectious agent and becoming infected. In many cases, they will be ill and they will have symptoms related to that illness. And if they are fortunate and, and relatively healthy, they will eventually recover from that illness and go on to become well again. But their immune system will have a memory of that foreign agent and confer immunity, which means if they're ever, if they're exposed to it again during some period of time defined by that particular agent and how that immune, the immune system works for that particular agent, they would be able to rapidly respond and not become ill again. The problem with that is during that middle phase, that infectious phase, some people develop very severe illness. Some people may have significant morbidity and disability as a result of the infection. Some people may actually not survive the infection, and that is what we're seeing with COVID-19. The safer route to acquiring immunity is through vaccination. And we have seen that in many cases, we vaccinate our children against many different illnesses. Those vaccinations allow us to acquire immunity in a safer way. It is an exposure to generally some portion of a vaccine or a component similar to the actual agent that stimulates the immune system but cannot cause infection. And in the case of COVID-19, these are not live viruses that we're talking about with vaccine, vaccine, vaccination. It cannot cause COVID-19, but it can stimulate the immune system and in a more, much more safer process lead to immunity. It is early for us to know exactly how long that immunity will last. It is really early for us to know how long immunity may last from a natural infection as well. But we would anticipate that for the vaccine at least, the immunity would hopefully last for a longer period of time. Next slide, please. And so many of you are aware that our federal government has invested in a number of vaccine development trials. And we are seeing six different vaccines and that have been or potential vaccines, vaccines that have been invested in, being developed for our potential use. And three of them now, previously it was two, have come fairly far along in that process. So we currently have the first two, Moderna and Pfizer, that are actually near, nearing the pipeline for approval and possible release if they are successful. What we're seeing from those trials is that they appear to have very strong response rates, very positive and very good safety profiles. So we're very hopeful that if they are approved by the FDA, that they will be released very soon. Next slide. So just some basic information. And one is that we are awaiting what we call emergency use authorization of the vaccine. And actually, that should be the FDA for that. The vaccines have, that I spoke of, have gone through their clinical trials. Those clinical trials look very positive. They are currently, have been submitted to the FDA for approval and will be reviewed and hopefully approved this month and in the near future. Once they are approved, we expect for them to be released for distribution and for vaccination of the public. At, at that point also, once, I'll, I'll go into the ACIP in a few minutes. There are some unique features of these vaccines, including some very unique storage and handling requirements such as ultra cold, cold temperatures for one of them, negative seven zero degrees to maintain for any significant length of time. Also, these vaccines do require two doses of vaccination separated by 21 and 28 days. The vaccines are also not interchangeable. So if you start with the Pfizer vaccine on, for your first dose, then in order for it to be effective, you cannot switch to Moderna. You will have to have the second dose with Pfizer as well. We are looking and anticipating vaccine to be available in a limited supply this month. I know later than January, but we expect mid to late this month, we will be seeing a vaccine. We will be utilizing a pod or point of dispensing concept for mass dispensing. You have seen pods when we exercise by offering free flu vaccines. This has been years and years of planning for the event of the need to offer vaccinations or other medication to large numbers of people for a public health emergency. So there's been lots and lots of experience in practice going on in the public health and the health system sector. The vaccine will be distributed in partnership between the public and private sectors, largely hospitals, public health, pharmacies, and also, we hope, private providers. We anticipate that the health department will be responsible for vaccinating approximately 35% of the population. And we are hopeful that we will have significant numbers of individuals vaccinated in order to acquire what we call herd immunity. Enough people being immunized that they, they, with disruptability for the vaccine to move from one susceptible person to another. We do know that there will be, there may be some people who are not able to receive the vaccine. And it's very, and it's very important that there are enough people who are immune and vaccinated who can form a buffer also around those individuals to help protect them for, from potential exposure. The vaccine will be free, but it is possible that some private providers could charge an administrative fee. And everything that I've said is subject to possibly some change or adjustment, particularly when we talk about timelines. Next slide. And so also, the Virginia Department of Health has, has established a vaccine advisory group. And this vaccine advisory group will be looking at the issues that are on this slide, including safety and efficacy, developing partnerships, barriers to vaccination to ensure that those are overcome and understood, developing communications. And the communication campaign is already being developed and released. And also, health equity will be a major priority of, of this program. We are looking at open and closed pods. A closed pod would be a point of dispensing that is targeting a specific group. And so the vaccine would be offered to those individuals in sort of a clinic-like setting or mass clinic-type setting by invitation. And then the open points of dispensing would be available to anyone who, who chooses to come. In addition, I wanted to point out that this is something that really requires a lot of engagement and coordination. And key to that is our partnership with the city. And as the city has been with many other issues, as soon as we've said, we need, they're ready and standing and have been working with us actively engaging in helping to plan for this event. Thank you. And, and next slide. So the, the, I've talked a little bit about this or referred to them, the Vaccine Advisory Group or the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices is the advisory committee at the federal level that will also be looking at and approving the prioritization of the vaccination once it's approved by the FDA. And you may have heard recently about recommendations coming from the ACIP regarding the first priority groups that should, are being, should be recommended to receive the vaccine. And on the left there, what we're hearing at this point is that they will be healthcare personnel and long-term care facilities and restaurants, I mean, and residents. The personnel would be included in the, the former group, but residents would also be included because of the high rates of mortality and adverse outcomes that we're seeing in that population. It is critical that we reach them as early as possible. Other groups in consideration include other essential workers. So that might be what we would consider, anyone who's forward-facing, those individuals who have had to continue to work and be constantly before the public because they provide an essential service to the community and are therefore at risk. Also adults with high-risk medical conditions and adults over the age of 65, as I pointed out, who have higher rates of hospitalization and also mortality from COVID-19. However, as you may have heard in the, the news about these priority groups being named, the actual formal process of recommending what the priority groups will be will not happen until the vaccine is approved by the FDA. So we're still waiting for that step to happen, although it will, I would anticipate, happen very quickly. And it's very likely that they may drill down further into naming what the next level of priority groups may be. Next slide, please. And here is just a depiction of the approach for vaccination that we anticipate seeing. We anticipate that this will occur in phases. We will not get all of this vaccine all at once. It will come to us in aliquot of phases. The first, Phase One will be very limited and really directed towards those first priority groups, likely including the hospitals and the long-term care facilities, which is where we're focusing our planning now. And those, those, that vaccination will be provided only by public health and hospitals, and those will be closed pod settings. Near the, nearer the end of that phase, Phase 1B as opposed to Phase 1A, it may be open to other priority groups as well, again, defined by the ACIP and also our local healthcare advisory group. Then Phase Two is likely to be, as we start seeing more vaccine being released, it will be opened up more to more critical populations and gradually to the general public and by phase. And by Phase Three, we'd anticipate there was significant vaccine around and it would be much more widely available to the general population. In Phases Two and Phase Three, we anticipate other partners will be brought on board to help provide vaccination, which will likely include private providers, FQHCs, or federally qualified health clinics, other clinics, other community settings. Next slide. And I won't go into this into great detail, but I did want to point out that once the FDA vaccine is approved and the ACIP recommends the priority groups, there are two distribution channels that will go on with the vaccine. CDC will allocate vaccine to the states based upon population. And at that point, Virginia will use its local, will look at the recommendations of the ACIP. And if we receive a large enough volume in the first shipment to vaccinate everyone that falls into those priority groups, and we anticipate that would be about 500,000 individuals for healthcare workers, for example, and long-term care workers, then we would just follow that. The vaccine would be directly shipped to those facilities. However, if they're, if it's received in smaller batches, then further prioritization may go on using the advisory groups within the state to help drill down to those prioritizations of how we would approach it. Also, at the same time, there's a federal distribution that will be going on, and CDC will be allocating vaccines directly to pharmacies in the state. Our pharmacies will be working to release vaccine to the long-term care facilities. They have the option of being able to opt-in, to have pharmacies to help service them for that purpose. Other priority groups will also be receiving vaccine. And this is the arm that will also serve as the federal system. Next slide. So the Health Department, just to briefly talk about the role of the Health Department, the Health Department always fills, focuses, if there are other options for other services, focuses on those most greatly impacted and working to ensure equitable access and distribution of vaccine, looking at the hardest hit, looking at those at most risk, and ensuring that whatever the processes are in place, that these issues are being addressed. But we will also likely be engaged in full vaccination of the general population as well. It will just come a little bit later. We will finalize vaccination plans, actively recruiting both volunteers and contract workers and planning and looking at supplies and logistics currently. Next slide, please. So this has been a very challenging and difficult journey for all of us. I know that the general public is tired. It has been a long and difficult process with expectations of how we fight this thing until we have some relief. We are nearing a point that we will have relief, but it will take time. I pointed out in the early slide that when we hear rumors of some relief coming, we start to see a relaxation, and we cannot afford to do that. We're in a period now that we're in a surge. We're seeing our cases go up. We're seeing the adverse impacts go up. We have to continue our vigilance and hold strong a little longer until we can get past this. This will not be all of a sudden that there will be huge lots of vaccine coming out and everyone will be vaccinated at once. It will occur in stages, and it will be a process that will go over months. So we do need everyone to be patient and to continue to work with us as we try to keep people safe. I wanted to take a moment today, though, to recognize the tremendous individuals in our population representing many sectors of our society who have contributed greatly to ensuring that we continue to be as safe as possible throughout this pandemic. These are people who have to be weary. They're with us every day. I don't know if we lost a slide? Can we come back? Who are with us every day. Next slide, please. And next slide. Want to start with, how do we say thank you to these groups of people who have sacrificed so much to keep us safe? And starting with the healthcare workers, it is hard to know how to put into words a thank you that adequately addresses what they have contributed. But I would say or suggest that we start with saying thank you by following the recommendations. Stay at home when you're sick. Next slide, please. So how do we say thank you to our food service workers and all the other essential providers facing the public every day? Wear a mask and avoid crowds. Next slide. How do we say thank you to our first responders, public safely, safety, public works? Wash your hands and wash them often or use hand sanitizer. Next slide. How do we say thank you to our public transportation workers? We ask that you maintain social distance, continue to do that as much as possible. Next slide, please. And how do we say thank you to our public health workers who I don't think at this point know what a weekend is or what a vacation is and are working long hours? If exposed, stay away from others and celebrate your holidays at home for now until we get past this. So my recommendation is we say thank you by showing and helping these people who are working so hard to do the work that they're trying to achieve to keep us safe. That's all I have for you today. Thank you very much for your attention.
And really informative presentation. And hopefully, we are going to be seeing some light at the end of this very long tunnel. Do we have any questions for Dr. Lindsay?
I have.
Okay. Anybody? Okay, Mr. Moss.
You mentioned earlier, and thank you for that's a great presentation, a lot of detail in there, and I hope the viewing public that sees that takes to heed the good recommendations. But you mentioned in January was where the crossover point could be where the demand for ICU beds would exceed the supply of ICU beds. I think that's what I heard you say in your brief in January, that potential existed. I know that other cities and regions in the Northeast specifically are already anticipating that that point will be made, and they are establishing temporary facilities. I think Boston did 200 beds in a field hospital somewhere, I forget where it was. Is the region looking and have a contingency plan and to establish those types of additional surge capacities that would take place outside of a traditional hospital? And when is the red line, so to speak, in January on that trend line, when we'd have to actually take that action in order to be prepared?
I don't think, okay, thank you. First of all, the state has, has long done planning, contingency planning on how to address issues such as a surge if we were to exceed capacity. And there had been a lot of planning done in that area during COVID-19 planning. However, I would say that the goal from the state would be not to allow us to reach that. So what I showed you was a projection of what could happen as we're watching these numbers if we don't take steps to intervene. My expectation is that we would take steps to make sure we never get there. And that was our approach that we were looking at during the first surge, and we were successful in accomplishing that.
Why I ask, because the national assessment, which may not be the state assessment, since these statistics vary by localities, is that the full effect of the Thanksgiving surge has not yet been felt and distributed within the economy. And where, when, if that trend line goes from 10.5 to 11 to 11.2 and it doesn't bend, so when does that curve that we're now on, because I think we were in that 10-point, 11-point range last March, April, early when we started? So if the curve doesn't bend by when, when does that January projection that you say you're not going to achieve become inevitable because you haven't gotten the reduction? That's, you know, it's nice to have goals and think things won't happen, but plan for the worst is usually, hope is not a strategy in our business. So I'm trying to understand when and how much more do we need to be doing? You know, what can we as a city council do? I'd be interested in your recommendation. I'm sure the mayor and my friends would as well. What more can we do to, so it doesn't bend? But when does it have to start bending to avoid that January picture that you talked to?
I'm not going to give you a number. I think it is something that we monitor and we watch every day, and we watch those trends, how fast that projection is going, what we know is going on in terms of our residents in the community. We're doing a lot of things in terms of monitoring our businesses and how well they're doing. There are just so many different factors that come into play. There is constant and regular discussion at all levels of the state in terms of these levels and whether or not we need to take additional actions. I can assure you that those actions will be taken if we determine that we need to step in. But I'm taking one now by appealing again to the public and encouraging them to understand that what they do, the decisions they make in terms of their activities have a direct effect on how we do as a community and how others who don't have a voice, such as those at the nursing homes, are doing. But there is not an absolute number. I don't think that's the approach we want to take. I think we want to be analytical and considerate and look at this very closely and make decisions, actually, day by day, but also looking at our trends.
I'd like to close this if I could. I'm, I'm certain you don't want to share your decision matrix, nor does the government, nor does the federal government. But I cannot believe that while they may not want to be over, the public to overreact or overreact, I, I want to believe that someone is keeping the secret scroll decipher code a-ring, and they really do have threshold metrics that they are monitoring, and they are not planning day by day. But in reality, but I think the public needs to know that this is very serious, those numbers are rising. Councilmember Henley has said it more than any of us. And this isn't good for our community. This isn't good for opening our schools. This isn't good for anyone, and it is only something that we can personally control by our individual behavior. Obviously, it didn't happen over Thanksgiving across the country. But if we don't, you might not want to say it here, but I'll say, the consequences on the other side are going to further put our businesses, our schooling of our children's stuff, at risk. And I can't speak strongly enough, and I don't know, later we'll maybe talk about what we as a city can maybe put that message out there more proactively. But I, I think that those, that trend is alarming, and how fast it went up, I think is very alarming. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Moss and Dr. Lindsay, along that line, just to let you know, I understand that we are planning to do some public service announcements generated over the next couple of days that, you know, we will be getting out. So, you know, we will be acting proactively in that regard. Ms. Wilson.
Well, I agree. I'm very concerned about these numbers. And also, a lot of the people that are getting sick are people that we personally know and have been in meetings with, not recently, but people that we on a regular basis in the course of doing our business have been getting ill. I'm very, very concerned about this, and I frankly don't think we should have our meeting next week. I don't see why there's anything that important that we have to pursue that meeting, why it can't wait. I think this is a good time to just slow our motor down, and it's just one more meeting that we don't need to have to have some further exposure. There's just two, the numbers are going up, there's people that we know that are getting sick, and then we have a lot with our own families. I just don't think this is a meeting we should have at this time.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Mr. Tower?
I would simply renew, I'm not, I don't see the need to cancel a meeting, but I would renew my suggestion that we meet virtually until this further notice, until we decide that it is safer than it is right now to do so.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Okay, we can discuss this a little further as we move along. Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Dehaney, I think we got some city manager briefing.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, the aquarium director will brief council on some impacts of COVID-19 that have happened to the operations at the aquarium. It's going to be a very brief and succinct and quick presentation.
And Cynthia, let me just convey our apologies for, you know, just postponing you and, you know, sincere, we're glad you're.
Oh, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Mr. Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to share the Virginia Aquarium in a brief overview. I'm Cynthia Spanoulis, the director, and I am joined today by our chair, Sal DeBarro, our treasurer, Dan Peterson, and our secretary, Sheri Miles. As a brief overview for you, the Virginia Aquarium, of course, is a department of the City of Virginia Beach, and we are fortunate to have the leadership and guidance of Dr. Ken Chandler, deputy city manager. Additionally, as part of our legal agreement with the City of Virginia Beach, I am here today representing the Virginia Aquarium Foundation as the executive director. Unlike many other city departments, the Virginia Aquarium Department is robustly supported by our nonprofit organization. This nonprofit foundation contributes approximately $1 million a year for our operations at the Virginia Aquarium, and over the last 30 years has contributed about $30 million in capital projects for our exhibits and our animals on display. Thank you. This chart here illustrates the breakdown of this partnership. On the left-hand side, you'll see the city's operating department. Last year, in fiscal year '20, our operating budget was about $9 million. On the right-hand side of this chart, you'll see the Aquarium Foundation's support, which includes the cost to acquire the animals, our internationally recognized stranding program, our educational programs, and our exhibits. Of course, to sustain these items, the department has 132 FTEs, but the foundation supports 22 of these FTEs. And last year, we earned about $4 million in revenue. So I'm going to pause here for a brief moment because I want to reiterate, everything we do at the Virginia Aquarium Foundation is in support of the City of Virginia Beach, everything we do. These are a few pictures that highlight the important work of our foundation, our internationally recognized stranding program that responds to 350 stranded marine mammals and sea turtles each year, our educational programs that educate over 50,000 schoolchildren each year, and last Friday, you received our annual report in your Friday package. And speaking today on behalf of the foundation, I can tell you that we are very proud to support the City of Virginia Beach. As you will recall, we have two new buildings coming online this spring and summer, the first of which is the Darden Marine Animal Conservation Center. This new building will be a state-of-the-art facility comprised of three main areas. Stranded sea turtles and seals will have a rehabilitation area. There will be an area for our deceased sea turtles and marine mammals where our team can carry out examinations and can carry out examinations and conduct important impactful actions that will serve to protect these endangered species and ensure their future survival. And finally, the third area is dedicated to providing quarantine space for the animals that will ultimately be placed on exhibit at the Virginia Aquarium. The bottom picture of this slide shows our new south building, which is slated to open to the public this summer. The Marsh Pavilion was renovated and expanded by 200% with added new exhibit areas and a new veterinarian wing, which will be also available for public viewing. I would like to invite each of you for a personal hard hat tour over the next few months to see these buildings under construction. Today, I'm here to share the hardships that the Virginia Aquarium Foundation faces due to COVID-19. During the pandemic and even today, with our reduced guest capacity, we are losing money. Last fiscal year alone, the foundation lost over $1 million in earned revenues. These were from our restaurant partner, the adventure park, our boat trips and other educational programming, and our photo sales. The Virginia Aquarium was closed to the public 96 days. But unlike many other institutions, we couldn't just close our doors and return in June. We actually have 8,000 animals that are in our care every day, not to mention those hundreds of animals that we respond to along Virginia's coast. We didn't just sit idly by and hope for the best. Rather, we launched virtual learning modules by grade level, and we moved all of our fundraising to virtual platforms with our Closed But Still Caring Campaign. This was in addition to providing the exceptional care that we provide to those 8,000 animals every day. Unfortunately, during this time, our food vendor, Sadexo, chose to exercise their force majeure clause in their contract, and they left us in year three of a 10-year contract. This resulted in the removal of all of the food service equipment from the Virginia Aquarium. The city originally purchased this equipment in 1996 as part of our 1996 expansion as part of the city's CIP. Over the years, the Aquarium Foundation replaced this aging equipment when the city didn't have the necessary funds to replace it. And as such, as part of the most recent contract, the Virginia Aquarium Foundation had the food vendor take responsibility. The Virginia Aquarium Foundation needs now to purchase food service equipment for use in our cafe and to meet the needs of our catered events. Of course, our board is very proactive, and this slide shows some of the exciting things we are doing to continue our endeavors to be great partners with you, the City of Virginia Beach. As I mentioned in my second slide, the Virginia Aquarium Foundation funds the salaries of 22 FTEs for the City of Virginia Beach. Our board, especially our treasurer, Dan Peterson, who is the regional president of Truist Bank, have been very active in applying for and receiving COVID relief. However, our food service equipment and our foundation-funded salaries do not qualify under the city's nonprofit guidelines for federal COVID relief. And today, we are very grateful to the city manager and deputy city manager Chandler for their support in this presentation, in the hopes that you will provide $250,000 for food service equipment purchases and $85,700 in salaries to cover the 22 FTEs for the 96 days that we were closed. Today, our request of you is to help your partner, the foundation, with local COVID relief funding. We are hopeful that you will give us favorable consideration at your December 15 meeting. At this point, Mr. DeBarro, Mr. Peterson, or I will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I think we got it covered. Thank you so much. And once again, good stuff. Okay, Mr. Tower?
Just quickly, I have had the hard hat tour of the south building, and I urge all of my colleagues to do the same. I think you'll come away with a sense of wonderment at how all this is happening right while we're having COVID. It's going to be, we already have the most popular cultural attraction in the state, and we're going to, it's going to make it just force multiplier even better. So I think you would enjoy it. I think the foundation is well-served by Cynthia's leadership and Sal. Sal reminds me periodically of what a bad job I'm doing. I think he wants me to do better, and he knows how to get the best out of us. You guys are doing a good job. We want to help you. Thanks so much for all you do. You too, Dan. Thanks.
Okay, once again, thank you, and you are truly a jewel of Virginia Beach. Thank you for everything you all do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Dehaney?
Mr. Mayor, the last presentation will be robust but fairly brief. Kevin Cobasa, the principal accountant of the finance department, will make a brief, will give a brief presentation on the audited results for fiscal year 2020, as well as provide a brief update on the general fund.
Kevin, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. As you said, I'm here to present to you the city's FY 2020 CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. You should have received a copy of it today, a kind of informal copy in the throwing binder. We're working with our print shop, and we'll be getting you your formal copy of the CAFR in this upcoming Friday package. Just a brief thing of what that CAFR includes, it's got the letter of transmittal in the front, followed by the financial statements, and then towards the end, we've got the statistical sections. And also typically, it would include the single audit, but that is not included in the CAFR this year, and we have our external auditors, Clifton, Larson, and Allen here, and they will go through their audit that they completed. So I'd like to introduce Ares Coleman. She was the one that we worked with from Clifton, Larson, and Allen. So I'll turn that over to her right now and then come back and provide the results.
Good afternoon. My name is Ares Coleman, and I'm a director with Clifton, Larson, and Allen, and we are the external auditors for the City of Virginia Beach. So thank you very much for allowing me to have a little bit of your time this afternoon. And I want to go over the results of the 2020 CAFR, which is a comprehensive annual financial report. Auditors like to use acronyms, so I tried to sound them out the first time. First, before I go over the results, I want to thank the finance department for the city. As you're aware, because of COVID-19, the audit had to be done remotely, which means that they had to provide documentation electronically to us, as well as, instead of us being hands-on, face-to-face, we'd do a lot of virtual meetings, calls, Teams meetings. And for the CAFR to be produced on time to meet the Commonwealth deadline is just a great thank you to your finance department. It was a big task, and I very say that we had a successful interaction, and they did a great job. So Kevin mentioned the CAFR. I think it's 372 pages. Got a lot of good information there about the city. What belongs to my firm is the opinion. It's like two to three pages, and it basically gives our overview of the materiality compliance for the CAFR. The CAFR did receive an unmodified opinion, and unmodified is the highest level of assurance that an auditor is able to give. So what that means is that the CAFR and the financial information, related notes, and it requires supplemental information, is in accordance with government auditing accounting principles, government accounting principles, as well as yellow book standards and other auditing standards and accounting principles that are supposed to be applicable. We also issue a report over internal controls or financial reporting. This is because the audit is required to be performed in accordance with government auditing standards, which is just another restrictive level of standards for financial reporting. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We are required today to make certain communications with governance. I'll go with those right now. When you look at the CAFR, there are certain estimates, which means there are certain numbers that management does not have a hard number to actually apply in the financial statements. So they look at various assumptions, and they determine what is a reasonable amount for that item based on the assumptions. And this would be your net pension liability, your net OPEB liability, depreciation. Those numbers are not based on a number where you can, we can point to a particular document says this is a real number. It is based on assumptions. As auditors, we look at those assumptions, determine if they are reasonable, and what management underlined reasoning for them, and then we assess if they are reasonable. Financial disclosures, there were no sensitive disclosures, and disclosures were in accordance with auditing principles. We did not encounter any difficulties with management during the audit. We had no disagreements with management during the audit, and there were no uncorrected or corrected statements requested by the auditor. Management did give representation as a part of the audit, and what this states is, to their knowledge, all the information they provided to us was accurate and reasonably stated. Management did not consult with any other consultants besides the independent auditors, which was us during the audit. As part of the audit, we look at the group financials, which will be your school board and the Community Development Corporation. Other information that we are required to review as part of the audit but do not give an opinion on is a required supplemental information, and then other supplemental information, which is in the back part of the CAFR. Lastly, Kevin had mentioned about the single audit. Normally, your single audit, which is the audit of your federal expenditures, is included with your CAFR. For this year, because of the coronavirus relief funds that were utilized by the city, that made that program a high-risk program and is required to be audited in accordance with the Single Audit Act. As of now, OMB, the Office of Budget and Management at the federal level, has not released the audit requirements for those funds. And so what we are requesting of our clients is because of the amount of money that was spent, the expenditures, is that they delay the issuance of the single audit until OMB has released a compliance supplement. OMB, as well as the Commonwealth, have said there's no penalties for waiting until the compliance supplement comes out. The APA has issued guidance to state that once the single audit is readily available, it can be submitted, so that does not affect the audity risk for the City of Virginia Beach. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so now what I just want to do is go over some of the highlighted sections of this CAFR and bring to your attention some of the results that we had. So what I want to do first is kind of define two items that you'll see without the CAFR. One is net position, and one is fund balance. The net position is reported on an economic resource model or measurement. And what that does is that includes all assets and all liabilities, and it's reported on an entity-wide basis. So as a citywide basis, you'll see it'll include all the assets, your capital assets, and it will include all the long-term liabilities, such as debt, the net pension liability. So that is more of a long-term accountability that is used. And then you also have the fund balance, which is more of a current financial resource measurement, and you're familiar with that in the general fund when we talk about the fund balance of the general fund. So what we have here is we have our first schedule. This is Exhibit 1 of the CAFR, and this rolls up everything, all the city funds. It also includes the schools, and it also includes our component unit, which is a VB-CDC, the Community Development Corporation. Kind of what I wanted to focus on with this schedule is if you see down at the very bottom, there's a unrestricted net position of $512 million. And what that is, that's very similar to an unassigned fund balance. GFOA recommends having a two to three month of unrestricted net position, and for the city, that would be around $400 million. So as you can see there, we're doing very well with our unrestricted net position amount. Our second schedule here, which would be Exhibit 2, is just your primary government expenditures. And as you can see on this pie graph, the majority of those, or a good amount of them, are within education. You also have public works that makes up a good amount. So then with this, with that public works, that includes all your depreciation expenses for your buildings, for your roadways. So that's why that number here looks quite large. So getting back to the general fund, and we look at it on a budget-to-actual basis, for our total revenues, we were $5.5 million under budget. And just to compare it, in 2019, or FY '19, we were $1.7 million under budget. So considering everything that was going on with COVID and everything, I would like to say that we had a pretty decent year with only coming in under budget by $5.5 million. You can see on the city expenditures, for the city, we had a variance of $109 million. So with that, that included $30 million of the cares funds that we use to reimburse ourselves for public safety salaries. That has now fallen into fund balance to where we can use that as necessary. We'll see here for the school side of it, they were $39.1 million variance. So that was the scorey version that was transferred back to the general fund. So the bottom line here, we have a total unassigned fund balance of $152.8 million, or that's roughly 13% of the 2021 revenues. So going into a little bit more detail about that fund balance reservation, we started with a total of $305 million fund balance. We make reservations for items that are either non-spendable or not part of a fund balance, for instance, your inventories and loans receivable. We have inventories for departments like Public Works, for the aquarium, for police. That totaled about $4.7 million. And then we also have loans for our rescue squads that we have loaned them money, about $3.6 million, and then also loans with VBDA that totaled $3.4 that make up that $11 million in non-spendable fund balance. You also have here, that we talked about, that scorey version of the 39 million. We have our reservations that were part of the 21 budget for CIP projects and for operations, and that gets back to our total of the $152.8 unassigned fund balance for FY '20, or about roughly 13%. So we know that the city council's policy is between 8% to 12%, so we are slightly above there. And what we like to say is usually, it's about $12 million for every 1%. So to get down to that 12 million, or that 12%, it would be about an additional $12 million in fund balance. I'm going to just not go over this real quick since we're on time here, but just wanted to point out a couple of things. As you can see, we have the sales tax that finished over budget. So we were on a very, trending very good at the start of FY '20 before the COVID hit. So I thought it was good to note that we still had some local taxes that did exceed budget and exceed prior year amounts, even though we know it happened starting in March. So on this next slide here, we have the expenditures of the general fund. So we have here, we see the comparing them from FY '20 to FY '19, and we have items like salaries and operating expenses that the FY '20 expenditures were over the 2019 amounts. And a lot of that was due to a lot of the restrictions that we put on spending, starting in March, when COVID-19 started hitting. So in total, as we saw, expenditures were about $100 million under budget, but we also did a good job, and they were about $52 million under FY '19 amount. So all of those restrictions that we put in place helped save us a lot of money to where it could go to fund balance. So this is just a look back of the past 10 years of the unassigned fund balance. And as we can see right now, for FY '20, it's at $12.9 million. And of course, that is our highest amount that we have had within the past 10 years. Just going through it real quick, there's a, brought down the school operating fund, and this is a breakdown of how their expenditures work. They took the same path that the city did, that once we realized that we could be seeing lost revenue due to COVID, they had some expenditure savings that they lost revenue due to COVID, they had some expenditure savings that they incurred as well. So that is why that score reversion amount was as high as it was, as they were able to save money in salaries and operating expenses as well. So what I did here is I brought the, just a highlight of the enterprise funds that the city has. So that's the water and sewer, stormwater, waste management and the parking fund. As we can see here, all of these funds have a healthy unrestricted net position, as we was talking about earlier. I think the thing too important to remember, to look at on this one is your receivable balance. So as we know that the billings that come out, the receivable balance, of course, has grown in FY 20 slightly. Water and sewer up a couple million, stormwater a million. And so what this is, this is just the citizen's ability to pay the bill that we're looking at, as we're seeing as this receivable goes, that we know that we're not collecting the bills as we have in the previous years. As far as your enterprise funds, this is just a revenue expenditure comparison for those funds as well. So then what I wanted to just touch base on is a couple of the special revenue funds that might have gotten hit in the hardest due to COVID-19 and just how some of the changes or the loss in tax revenue has affected those funds. So we see the TIP fund starting out with, we know that it gets all of its revenue from the trustee taxes, hotel, meal and amusement tax. So we see that that was $5.6 million under '20 compared to '19. So it resulted in a loss of fund balance of $4.1 million, bringing that ending fund balance to $23 million. So while it's still a healthy fund balance, that fund is used and to pay for a lot of future debt service for all the capital projects for tourism. So while it's something that, it has still a healthy fund balance, it's something that we need to continue to monitor. We have the TAP fund here, which also receives trustee taxes, just showing that the change in fund balance did increase, but that was because of some transfers that were made to this fund to help support it. I believe that the TIP fund transferred about $2 million to help support the advertising program. We have the Parks and Rec Fund here. I just wanted to highlight this to show you how the loss in charges for services revenue has affected this fund. We had a change in fund balance of a negative $6 million, so we brought it down to about $11 million. Same thing as before, while it's still a healthy amount, it's something to, we want to continue to monitor as we know the charges for service revenue is still not at a level to help sustain this fund by itself. And then the last one is the Sheriff's Department Fund. It had a loss of revenue as the courts were closed. It was not able to get some reimbursement from the state that it normally would for their court support. So it has actually brought it into a negative fund balance. While that's not a huge impact, it is a fund that the general fund supports, so it may be looking, that the support from the general fund may need to increase to help bring that fund back into a positive position. So just wanted to highlight some of the long-term debt here from the balances from this year compared to last year. We had the bonds payable went up about $140 million, and that would be expected as we sold roughly $200 million of bonds. We had our net pension liability that went up by $140 million, and the main reason for that was VRS, who does the actuary report for it. They decreased the discount rate from 7% to 6.75%. So that's their expected investment earnings. So that was roughly about $120 million for that liability increase. We had the OPEB liability that actually decreased roughly $30 million. So then going into the annual payments for the fiscal year, we had $106 million of principal on our long-term debt that we paid. We had our interest payments on our debt. We had the city pension, so this was the paying towards the pension liability of $48 million for FY 20. So in of that $48 million, it's usually, it's split about 50/50 between current year expenses and paying down that liability as well. So roughly $24 million went to paying down that net pension liability. So just have a pie chart here of the total debt that we have. General government debt making up about 50%, schools at 27, and then our enterprise funds at smaller amounts. Just wanted to bring attention, last year, you know, we did our second PAFER, which was our Popular Annual Financial Report, and that received a certificate of achievement from GFOA, and we are working on doing our PAFER for FY 20 as well. So just in summary, like we said, the general fund fund balance, the total was $152 million, which was roughly the 13%. As we know, the city council policy is 8% to 12%. So we had the net debt of total of $1.3 billion, which, like we said, was more than 19 by $150 million due to our bond sales that we had. The net pension liability total was about $1.1 billion with about $415 million for the city and $680 for the schools. Just wanted to say that although that school pension liability, some of it is with the state, but it is required to show all on the city's books here. And then the OPEB liability of $256 million. So that being said, we will be back to do our six-month interim in January, and then you have the budget, the FY 22 budget coming up in March and May. So with that, I will take any questions?
Thank you, Kevin, for your detail, an excellent report. And colleagues, if we can keep our questions succinct and to the point, because we got to get into executive pretty soon. John?
I submitted a number of questions, which I won't cover here, and I ask, when those questions are answered, they'd be shared with all of council. But I would like just to bring the council's attention on Slide 14. And I think you did an excellent job in your presentation. Thank you so much. But what should concern us all is even though we are making catch-up payments each and every year, and in some years, they were as high as $55 million, that's half of that, is that the net pension liability continues to grow. And if you may recall, we were on a 30-year amortization when we first started walking down this process. So our amortization schedule is truly not catching this up because the pension liability is growing. So I've asked the staff to come back and kind of show and explain that to us across all three categories of retirees, because I think that's something that we're going to want to understand going into the budget. But I thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Anybody else? Okay, Kevin, thanks a whole bunch. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I think we might have had one more.
Mr. Tower, do you have something?
I was just gonna ask, is the OPEB also included in your question? It's not?
No, I did not make my question. I did ask questions about it, but I didn't have to the same level of delineation.
Was it just because of the size? I'm just, I was just, I'm just trying to figure out the relationship between the OPEB and the pension itself.
So the pension one, which is with VRS, like I said, the main reason for that increase was the change in assumptions going from that 7% to the 6.75%, which increased it over $100 million just in that in itself. The OPEB, which is, part of it is outside VRS, already uses that lower discount rate. So that's why they did not make a change in assumption when calculating that amount this year.
Yeah, I was wondering why, how it went down while the pension went up. I assume you have to, you have to use some kind of discount rate for that as well.
If they wouldn't have changed that discount rate, that pension liability would have probably gone down without that change in assumption, so.
All right. Thanks.
Okay, folks, at this point, I think we do have to move on, but I thank you. Kevin, once again, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna do city council comments, and then if it's okay, at the request of Ms. Wilson, when we do new business in the formal session, we'll have a binary question. Should we cancel the December 15th or have it? I don't think the virtual option is a good idea. It's a very inefficient way of doing things. But once again, you know, just think about it. We're gonna have a poll. Should we cancel December 15th or not? It'll be a yes or no question. Yep. Ms. Hatt?
Wouldn't we have the option of someone doing virtual if they were not comfortable being presented?
I don't think virtual. I think let's just make it a yes or no at this point. Virtual is remarkably ineffective. At this point, you know, that's three choices, and I think we need a council majority to make a decision. We have it or we don't. Anybody else for council comments?
I only have one, and I think I'll just defer it to old business so we can keep the executive session on plan.
Okay. Okay, at this point, agenda review.
Okay. Under ordinances and resolutions, we have a single speaker on every item, but no other speakers in opposition. Does anybody want to vote no or pull any item? Mr. Moss, did you have one or two or something?
Well, I'm abstaining on one item, but let me find Dominion Energy, I just, number 11, and I have a letter on file with the city clerk and thank the city attorney for comparing that.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Mr. Moss.
As consistent with the past, I'll be voting no on Item 3 dealing with the ARP.
Item 3, A, B and C?
Well, I think they all go together, so correct.
Yeah, okay.
And I just have a comment I'd like to make at the appropriate time on these tax exemptions, but I'll wait till then.
Anybody else have any issue? Okay, we go to planning. We have speakers in opposition to every item other than Item Number 3. So Mr. Tower, Item Number 3 is in your district. Erica and Melvin Atkins, CUP, for conditional use permit for short-term rental, 598 Pine Wood Drive.
I'm sorry, but I didn't hear what you were saying.
Item 3 is the only one we don't have speakers in opposition for.
Okay, so you were saying that...
I was asking him what his druthers were on that one.
Okay.
And so you said consent. Does anybody wish to vote nay?
I do.
I'm voting no.
Yes, sir.
Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exceptions of the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A3 Beach District. Public contract, the discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and the discussion of the terms or scope of such contact where the discussion in an open body would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237A29 Headquarters Hotel Proposal. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or constituents pertaining to the actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefings in an open meeting would adversely affect negotiating or litigating posture of the body pursuant to Section 2.23711A7 Lynn Haven Area Properties LLC. And personnel matters, discussions, considerations or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries disappointing, resignation or specific of public officers, appointees or employees of any public body pursuant to 2.23711A1, which is council appointees, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agency and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Lucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
11 to 0.
Okay, at this point, we will recess into executive. I suggest a short break.